April eighteenth at three o'clock in the afternoon, there's a public hearing and everybody can be present and everybody can speak and have your fill about that. And then it will come to the city council, probably then in May. The recommendation of the planning and zoning board will come to the city council in May at a duly noticed hearing. And everybody will be able to speak again and be heard. And at that time, both the applicant and the applicant's lawyer, if they have one, and any opposition can speak in that particular forum. Now, if you were to speak today when it's not a public hearing and when it's not been properly noticed and the other side is not here, that's a violation of what's called the quasi judicial rules. That would play right into the hands of the people that are trying to get their rezoning done because it would make invalid anything that this particular, this council does. And it would make it subject to challenge and it would make it overturnable. So we don't want to do something that is not right just because we didn't follow the procedure. So the mayor asked me to explain this to everybody. I know a lot of you are here. We've got emails from a lot of you that are concerned about it. We know that there are a lot of people that want to speak about it and we do want to hear from him. But we don't want to poison the system that we have to work with him. So we will respectfully decline to entertain any discussion on that today during the open forum. Audience, we are in portion. We'd love to have you stay for the meeting, but we don't want you to be disappointed at the end of the meeting if you don't get to speak on that. Fair enough, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rogers.
And I do hope everybody understands where this process works. We certainly do want to hear from all of you. We just can't accept your questions and comments in the public forum that we're in here today. I think you can easily hold up all your council members through our emails, phone numbers. We would love to hear from you. So I just hope that answers a lot of your questions. Thursday, April two thousand nineteen. We do have an audience member that would like to be heard in this tab. We have Mr. Vance Yogan. Please state your name and address. Three minutes, sir.
Hi, Vance Yogan, one-two-six-one-nine Milwaukee, Tewery. I want to comment that this FWC, I think, is one asking me for that proclamation. I was at their meeting last night here in Tewery. So I was surprised that none of the, none of the city leaders were there. It was all fishermen and property owners on the waterfront. And as a consequence, the people who were there, the ones who went through with the call of Delphi technique, which you've probably seen in some of your prior meetings, you put a dot on maps on where you want to action. And so most of the dots for the action on reducing hydrella were not along your shores. There were some, but a lot of them were on other lakes and on, on the south side of the lake. And I would suggest that what you need to do is set some sort of committee and an action plan to monitor water quality in this lake and how it's flowing through that canal up there. And the fact that Lake County Water Authority has not ever tried to sue or get the Lake Apopka property owners from polluting your lake with all that water flow coming through there, even with that NERF facility, it's running twenty-four seven. And I'll send you some other ideas, but I think that this county, I think, lacks leadership in getting the problem solved. Instead, they just, Lake County Water Authority just raises more money. And we need stronger leaders, and I'm holding counting that and telling you that because you're on this lake. Is that it's going to get, it can get up and down in various, if you don't have an organized plan. Maybe even the league of cities or something like that. But since you are one of the ones that are affected by that pollution coming down through Lake Earlton and Lake Buclear, I think that you and Mandora would get involved in trying to talk to legislators more. Some people are talking to them, but like I said, there's a lot of things that I don't think are being done at a higher level. So that's my recommendation to you on that water issue.
Thank you, Mr. Yogan. We'll definitely look into that. Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. We're going to move on to tab number three, Tewery's Chamber of Commerce update. Jay Scott Barry.
Good afternoon. Just a few things. Hopefully you all have your report, our printed report. Now, there's some over here for any people from the community who would like to. I would like to point out one thing. This is our two thousand nineteen letter pad, which does show on the right all of the listings of our new two thousand nineteen trustees. We've increased our trustees tremendously over the last two years. There were seven three years ago, and now there's twenty-seven. And trustees are a vital part of our Chamber of Commerce, and so I appreciate all those companies standing with us. We continue to add new members. March, and I think that's February, March was our busiest month on Saturdays. We made over thirty-five calls, visits. It was really, really busy. Of course, that's the event season, so that's great. You can see all of the events that are coming up here soon. Largest event is our golf tournament, which is a week from Friday, so it's next Friday, April twelfth. We still have openings for teams. If anyone would like to do that, it's a hundred dollars for a foursome. And we're going to have a great time. It's at Deer Island Country Club, which is the only golf course in central Florida that is on a true island, by the way. So right here in Tewerys. And then you can see our monthly luncheon in April. This is sponsored by Guardian Live, and this is going to be really cool because we've got five Tewerys high school seniors who are graduating in May, and they're going to be the speakers for that month. They're each going to share different stories, different experiences, or different goals, what they're going to do. So it's going to be a really great opportunity to hear from our graduating class. So that would be a good one to be at. Please be sure to RSVP. And then I also want to point out the ribbon cutting for added health, waterman ER, their new ER. It is on a council night. They know that, but there were other things they could change. But they are not doing the ribbon cutting until six. So hopefully we don't have a real long meeting that night and can get there for the ribbon cutting by six. Any questions? Comments? Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Moving along to swearing in by city attorney in this place for export communication. All right. We're going to move on to reading of all ordinances, resolutions into the record. Just move back.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one ordinance that first reading two thousand nineteen oh six. An ordinance of the city of Tewerys, Florida, meaning the city of Tewerys Land Development and Water Relations, find a new sectional layout of landscape and buffer regulations, many table eleven C, to require type E buffer between residential and any district, RSF one, RSF A, RSF two, RMF two, RMF three, in the local management district, RMHP and RMHS, providing accessibility and providing turn effective data.
Thank you. We're going to move on to consent agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on the consent agenda? City Council.
I'm Mr. Cruz.
Mayor, we have a motion in a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Orphances, resolutions, what they carry. We have a first reading. And first readings are read into the record by the clerk so as to place an, to place an, all present parties on notice that a quasi judicial process is, action item is coming for the city council on a specific date. And a second reading will be the time that those will be able to, you will be able to speak on this. At that time, the applicant and public are invited to provide testimony and input. It is expected that the city council, public, and the applicant, once notified by this first reading, will take time to do their due diligence on the project prior to the second reading. This may include visiting the site and effective neighborhoods, receive communication from the applicant and the public. All parties are welcome to contact any council member to discuss these matters outside of this public forum. At second reading, the city council will receive public input and testimony from the applicant, and then they may take action. Therefore, neither discussion nor testimony is received at this first reading. We do have somebody that had a request to speak, and I hope this answers your question that you do not take public comment this time. So right now, I'm going to hand it over to, just move back. Is there anything that you didn't read it, or that's written up? Okay. All right. So we are going to move on to second reading. We have general government. Tab six, we have a performing arts center. I think we've been very excited to hear from. We have our draft coming up. I know some of the members of the audience were with us at our workshop a couple of weeks ago and got some really great feedback, and we're looking forward to hearing some answers from our team that's created the design. But I just want to let everybody know that at that workshop, it was an open forum, and we were able to have a back and forth. You were able to ask questions, get questions answered right then, maybe have a follow-up question. But with this being a council meeting, we're going to do things just a little bit different. Today, what we're going to do is we're going to have our team come up, and they're going to present the draft to council. And that time, I'm going to open it up for the public to come up. And I do welcome everybody that has an interest in this program to come up and speak. And if you do have any questions, we're going to jot those questions down. And once I close public comment, we'll have the team come up and they will answer your questions. So this time, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to our community service director, Ms. Tamara Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Here we go. Thank you all. Yes, we began this journey on November first of two thousand eighteen with our first public workshop. I believe nearly two hundred fifty people arrived at the pavilion to hear the good news of the possibility of a performing arts center. And we began the discussion then. And from that gathering point until now, the Haskell Company team has put all of that, all of those ideas from the public and as well as from their professionals, design professionals, and put them together and just through this document. And it is a living and breathing document. It has morphed and changed a few times, and tonight provides another opportunity for council members to weigh in on what you hear tonight. And the team will take your input back to their shop, and they will tweak this document for the final time. And it will be delivered to you for adoption at the next council meeting. So we are excited to be at this point already, and I want to thank the public as well because I see many of the cheering people from the last public workshop that was held on February twenty-seventh. And you were right there. It was a wonderful, wonderful dialogue. So our consultants have taken that input and woven it into this document as well. And the highlights are really the asking to identify, identify the building sites. And this site behind City Hall was ultimately selected. We asked them to size it for our community. What, what is the size? How many number, how many seats will this facility, could this facility hold? And the cost to build the facility and the potential funding sources to, to fund the project and the annual operating budget. So their delivery will reveal that information tonight. And we've also, we asked them to look at one more thing, and that is the potential of adding a fountain to this city and to this project. They've delivered a wonderful presentation on that, so you will see that woven into this delivery tonight as well. So you're looking at three things. You're looking at the cost of the performing arts center, the cost to build, the cost of a parking garage, and the cost of a water feature. That will all be shared with you tonight as well. So of that, I have nothing more. John?
Just one more thing with that is whether the library should be in the facility or not in the facility. And I think you'll see that was concluded in the library needs to stay where it had expand where it's at, grow where it's at, and would not be inside the performing arts center. So that was another component. So back to you, Tamara, and introduce the team, and we'll let them give a presentation and an overview. And then back to the mayor for comment and public input.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. It's always a pleasure to be back. Certainly excited. You know, great plans start with the voice of the community. So we've certainly had the opportunity to hear on multiple occasions from the community, and we continue to encourage that voice as well. So thank you very much for that. Also, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and certainly fellow council members for having us today and giving us the opportunity to present our update. I'm going to be brief. I would like to introduce our team. The agenda today is exactly what Ms. Rogers had talked about. Certainly, we want to bring you up on our current update related to the refinement of our conceptual test bid, if you will, and also review of our rough order and magnitude costs. With me today, I have Chris Allen, who will be giving a portion of the presentation related to the evolution of the design thinking, the process. He's our director of design and architect with our Haskell Design Group. I have Melody Jancheck, who is our business development manager as well. She's been involved since day one and even previous to day one. I have Eve Rathley, who is our Performing Arts Center design architect, who is here for Q and A as well. And I have Mr. Charlie Rochel, who will be delivering the message related around the costs, the range of costs as we continue to refine our concept and move forward with, with hopefully a successful performing arts center for the community. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chris Allen.
Chris, if I have the next slide, please. So as, as has been mentioned, we had a great opportunity for both this body and also members of the public and the design team to interact. This was where we had the first major event out at the pavilion. A lot of folks may remember that opportunity, and lots of information was gathered. Next slide, please. And then most recently, we're here at the end of February for the public workshop. I'm interested, I know you were here, as well as several other members, members of the public, where we were able to present our first ideas about how the vision might come to fruition here to advance Tewerys as a very unique and special place for performing arts. Next slide. So some of the key discussion points that came out of the initial public workshop as well as the event at the pavilion, street closure was presented. Site around the city hall that has been selected by the city council to continue to study the location of performing arts is in deep shape. So one of the things to provide an available area for the performing arts center to occupy the site is that the street can be closed. The design team was able to present the fact that while automobiles may not be able to traverse the street going forward, that we would have an opportunity to leave the interior building space as an open space. Would view through for both pedestrians and, like I say, view through into the lake. And so while you may lose the actual conveyance of the street as a formal street, that space can be a part of the urban experience of Tewerys. Establish a strong brand image. This also came up in the workshops, that we don't want this to be like anybody else's performing arts center. We're not trying to build or create something that others have, just have one of those. But this needs to be very unique and very specific. Since Tewerys, and so we'll go back through some of the design images that were presented at the workshop and speak to that. Create spaces to host multiple events. So primarily, it is a main theater, perhaps in the order of magnitude of six to eight hundred seats. However, that theater may be dedicated for, say, some weeks of performance, where you have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday matinee, and those are the events. It's great when that happens. But what, what goes on in the performing arts center when that is not happening? So we need to make sure that we're spending dollars wisely. The way we create the building as we envision it has different kinds of spaces. Other things can happen, but those main performance are not going on. Theater capacity was a great topic of discussion. Our performing arts consultant in his report, which you see in the draft version, has determined that a six to eight hundred seat theater is viable in this location. However, the public and members of the city council raised discussions where it's a decision for Tewerys to make with whether they might be a little bit smaller. Perhaps that's more appropriate and unique to this location. And other members mentioned that the certain acts might be a barbershop, you know, more similar to something that we can see in Orlando or in the villages. And so that would be a decision for discussion as this community moves towards the, the type of capacity that they'd like to have. And then maintaining connectivity with the city hall, this was also a large item that came up in discussion. It's great to have a new feature, a new place to go to do activities in downtown, but let's make sure that we don't hamper the facility we're standing today, that new facility. And so we have some thoughts regarding parking and access. This changed a little bit since the public workshop there. If you go to the next slide, please. So just to reiterate the program, the main theater, of course, has been in the contract and in the scope of our work to think about right from the beginning. Black box theater has also been there. We introduced an idea that was favorably received, that black box being an internal environment for a hundred or so patrons to enjoy a show. It might be an opportunity that could be unique to this facility where some exterior doors or something could open up and allow that white, that black box to become a white box on rooftop. And you'll look at that in some drawings. And that's that next bullet point, rooftop performance outdoor space. Multipurpose event space, again, trying to be flexible beyond just the main theater. Lots of great ideas came up in terms of things like high school graduations, Chamber of Commerce, mini trade shows, art exhibitions, that sort of thing. Can there be a space in there? I think we've continued to show how that can be accommodated in the vision. Learning is a good area, so that kind of goes with that as well. Is there recital spaces? Are there places to have piano lessons, things like that? Or is that a way to animate this building when it's not just about the main performance? And then finally, the parking garage, which is very, very important. Parking is an issue right now with certain events throughout the year. And for this venue, we certainly want to make sure it's very convenient for residents. Visitors like to come down, use the performance area. And of course, that parking garage does keep going to be as well. So can it support downtown businesses and other things? So here is the initial diagram that was presented at the public workshop. You can see that the first and foremost thing designated by the red stripe and the arrow was how do we deal with putting the building on that street? The red stripe actually is metaphorically representing the appropriate red carpet and could be a reference in something like Ruby Street as well to tie this as part of the activity that go on in the lake. We go to the next slide. This is the first floor plan, so there's the red carpet. Again, this would literally necessarily be a red carpet, could be paving or floor materials, but it celebrates the purpose of the event. And then that rectangle that the red stripe goes through would be that open area, that multipurpose event space. Could host graduations, would go show, something like this, little activities that can go on that first floor. And it can also serve as the pre-function space. So while you're waiting for the performance in the theater above to happen, it's a great hangout space, a great social space for the community. See the location of the parking garage, which is important to have direct proximity to access from the eastern side. You see the green stripe. That represents a connector that allows people who may not be coming forward for performance or may be coming times when there isn't a performance. That's the support of the downtown business or the, you know, the main street activities. You can park in that garage and get right out. The difference this time around, as you see the space right here, right out of these windows, actually, that we had shown a potential program there earlier. We've since removed that program. That becomes an opportunity for accessible parking spaces and also allows anybody who parks in the garage to be able to access City Hall easily from that side of the property. If we move around to Main Street, you see the front of City Hall where we have some parking spaces. We intend to hold the facade of the building back to allow that space, which would be designed to take a wheel loading. So during business hours of City Hall, you could do your five, ten, fifteen minute parking. Some of the residents mentioned utility bills, other transactional things that need to happen quickly could still be functional. And then the white square back towards Mod Street, you know, behind the BTW parking lot, represents opportunity for support spaces, back house kind of spaces. Maybe some of those recital rooms, the things that we talked about earlier. If we move up a level to the second level, this would be the main level for the theater. So you see a kind of shaded area that suggests seating. Again, we don't know what size exactly. You know, this represents about six hundred seats in this diagram. The important thing is that it's proof of concept. It shows that a sizable theater can be adapted to this site and can function there. Parking garage, of course, goes all the way from grade multiple levels up, so we see that every day right again. Then yellow space, this represents the double height space. So that's your entry lobby from the plaza outside the building to inside. It can be very exciting. And of course, again, back towards Mod Street, that white square represents the multiple stories of support type things that are needed to make sure the facility is successful. Go up one more level, please. And this would be the roof plan. So the roof deck has this wonderful outdoor space and also hosts the black box space that can be opened up to support different types of concerts out there on the roof with a great view towards the lake. Move forward again, next slide, please. And here is a bird's eye view, looking over the square towards City Hall. And so we begin to see the glass facade, which starts to speak towards the branding of various performing arts centers being something completely unique, completely different, something that's not seen in the other comps that we've looked at with our performing arts consultant. You see the parking garage in the background. There will be a high element that is required for the theater's function, the fly loft, where they lift up scenery. So that's the highest element. You see it back towards Mod Street. And then there's a suggestion of a volume there to the left-hand side that would accommodate the program. Go to the next slide. And here will be the signature entrance. So this is opening night where you barrage, and you're going to go through the opening plaza. You see City Hall there on the right, and this wonderful glass window to the arts. And volume of the theaters hovering up above, which spoken length of the public workshop about using metaphorically the sea plain, lines of fuselage floats. And so that's articulated in some architectural manner to make a strong connection to a sense of place in Tewerys. And the rooftop opportunities there suggested by the umbrellas, that there could be activities going on there. The weather's nice. Next slide, please. There's a view coming from the rooftop. I'm going to move hands again. I'm going to go through quickly here. So not only, this is the rooftop experience that we can towards the lake. So not only can it support the activities that are in the program that we suggested in our report, it can also, on those days, the sea plain has occurring of a wonderful rooftop overlook down Rockingham to lakefront where you can watch a lot of the sea plain activities out on the lake. Next slide, please. Here's the section of the building, so we're cutting right down Rockingham. As if we took half the building away and looking into the half towards City Hall and part of Rockingham. So we see on the ground floor, that's the residual street space that now has been closed. There could be glass aviation hanger type doors that can be lifted up. So again, depending on the weather and whether you want to move people in and out freely, you have the opportunity to really have a dynamic space on the ground level. If we move up, you see the traditional theater section. Sorry, can you go back one more? But you see the traditional theater with its flags. So there's the high moment we saw earlier. And then that little cube against it would be the black box theater, and then your roof deck is there. Next slide, please. Here's just some images, thinking about how we want to brand Tewerys to have something unique. So at night, this becomes the lantern, again, the phrase, "doing all the arts." So this really is the memorable feature, the memorable architecture. This is where the dollars would be used to create the most architectural piece that everyone would remember and associate with a successful performing arts center. Next slide, just another view. Advance again, please. Kind of, of course, always the association, sea plain and back to the lake. I think that may be the last slide on this section. Yeah. At the end of this next section, where we're going to move into the costs and some of the operating numbers. That was a piece that I was very interested in last time. We were not prepared to speak on that. We are today. So Charlie Rochel will come up and begin to walk us through that. And at the very end, we have redone a little video that folks liked last time we showed. And so my colleague, Eve Rathley, will help to sort of narrate that, just so we can move around. Things are always more memorable when they're moving and they're in three dimensions. It's easier for us to mark. So thank you for my portion, and Charlie Rochel.
Thanks, Chris. Good afternoon, and I'm going to give a brief overview to talk about the budget, some of the funding, options and scenarios, and what about the operations and maintenance costs. All of this information is an overview. It's in a detailed report that's going to be provided. When we look at the budget, you'll see here that we've got it broken out by the performing arts center itself, parking garage facility, and the found feature that Tamara mentioned. And we had a lot of this imagery in the report. Was it in the presentation today, just for time sake that we had? You'll see there's quite a range in pricing for the performing- You'll see there's quite a range in pricing for the performing arts theater component. And just to talk about some of those key considerations that affect the budget, these numbers are looking out that construction will start in 2021. Some of the things that can really impact the final budget are the following, just to highlight them. Geotechnical conditions of this site still need to be explored in the final design of the building. Could have an impact on foundations and that's something that can affect the budget, but it's manageable within these numbers. The garage aesthetics, the final efficiency and geometry of that garage needs to be worked out. And then, you know, you can do a lot of things with the enhancements of the exterior of the garage. So where that goes could affect the budget. The acoustical design, a lot of this, a lot more detailed information is provided in the report from a theater consultant related to types of shows. At the end of the day, that the research that we believe we can attract here, there's still a discussion we had on the acoustical design. And if that is a wide range of acoustical treatment that can be done to attract certain types of shows. So the acoustic design of the performing arts center, you saw some of the flexible spaces on the rooftop and on the ground level. And right now, they're just open boxes. And so the final design of those spaces, whether it's the type of treatment we put in from a technological side or finishes, could impact the design. And then just in general, where does the wow and the pop go for the designing consideration? You know, the focal piece being the front, but you know, how far that has to go and how far it's wrapped around all four sides of this building, because it is right in the middle of the town, you know, could have an effect on the budget. So there's lots of opportunity. The design is not done at all, it's just a massive, an inherited, an idea. And there's opportunity for the design and construction team to work together to manage a final facility budget. Next slide, please. When it comes to funding, there's quite a bit of information in the report. One of the things I'll just point out is that the city has a master plan that covers the CRA and has done, has made great progress on that. And it was adopted, a resolution that proved the fact that the master plan is looking to the performing arts center in downtown as important. In our research for the different types of agencies that could provide funding, the applications look for different components. This is just a list of a majority of the types of things that the design team and you all have to consider in the final programming and design. As depending on some of these items, if you have them incorporated in the program, you might be able or eligible to solicit grant in certain types of loans. So that needs to be taken into consideration. When it comes to the governance of the facility, there's a few ways to operate. The ones we're pointing out is that it could be a third-party private situation, it could be completely public, or it could be a nonprofit. And, you know, this still needs to be worked out as you continue the plan, but the final arrangement of the governance could have effect at certain types of funding streams. Next slide. In our research and talking with other developers who have successfully assisted cities like yourself in obtaining their vision of performing arts centers, we got some good feedback as to what reasonable expectations would be when it comes to, you know, a balance between publicly funded and privately funded. And the 70, 30% ratio is the guidance that we've been given, we are given. On the right there are a highlight of items that we have in the report in detail. These are the opportunities for the public funding. And a lot of these are like GOB, like the general obligation bonds, revenue funds, these are things that you've done before. All of this is specific to Taverius. For instance, the TIFF district that you have established downtown is a source of funds. You have green space, park impact fees, you have an infrastructure sales tax, you have Lake County had a tourist development grant, and this site is within a brownfield area. So there's a combination of different places that certain funds can come from to help go towards the final construction. And it's probably not just one of these items, but a combination at the end of the day that's going to help you get all the dollars. This is an actual sort of compilation of all the different funds that we did our research on. You'll see a few in there related to the library. Our original study asked us to study library funding too. But most of these will, are different loans and grants, programs that this particular project could be eligible for, provided that we designed it to include the elements that the applications and the loans are looking for. And so you can see there's between the loans and the grants, over $40 million available that we've identified. These change on a yearly basis, but this is the information that we have available to us. Next. And then this is a little hard to see, I'm sorry about that, but it's just to give staff an idea of some scenarios. And so we ran four scenarios out. Obviously, there's, we could have many more. There probably will be a different scenario at the end of the day that's the final scenario for you. But just to give you an example of how certain types of grants or loans in combination can have an effect on the payments, you know, the payment ranges from 1.9 to 2.8, or the total debt that the project would have to pay back over its life. And as you can see, that's also quite a range. And that's just based off of the $40 million all-in cost across the board. So there's lots of ways to explore how to get this project done, and we have some advice for the city as to how to take that next step when they're ready. Next slide, please. So we'll look at operations. This was mentioned in the report in great detail. Chris touched on it, that we've moved down four local venues, Claremont, Dora, Savannah Center, and Sharon Morse Facility. And research was done on the shows that they hosted the last couple of years and the size of their facility. And then we looked at, our theater consultant looked at what possible shows we could attract here that would not be in complete competition, but more of a complement to the other venues and sized for the facility, that assists a 800-seat facility. So that's sort of the background of the research, and there's more to read in the report. There's some other considerations. What I'm talking about operations and how it can affect the budget for this is whether or not the operating model is civic versus commercial. And in terms, the way we use those terms is civic being that the facility is primarily first come, first served for local public type theater operations or programs versus commercial, which is focused on, you know, booking, shows and venues get first priority. And then what's available leftovers for the public, you know, to use. We recommend, based on our research and the facility, that this needs to be, the operating cycle should be focused around a commercial operation for it to be successful. There's different ways to operate the venue. It can be completely run by the city, that's one option. It could be third-party private management, or it could be a nonprofit operator. And the nonprofit component, as you've seen a couple of times, has some incentives related to tax. But the discussion on venue operation comes down to a risk reward. Discussion that will have to be part of the overall planning and development for the budget on here, because, you know, depending on if you want to mitigate risk or take on more risk and take the reward of making the profits off shows is part of that balance when it comes to the operation costs. Next, please. This is just a quick look, based on the program that we have today, the size of the facility that you saw. This is the staffing that we believe is going to be required by position and salaries that we think are appropriate. The staffing component in the white box totals $475,000 a year. And then based on this facility's size, $200,000 a year for maintenance and operations and upkeep. So about $675,000 plus or minus a year for operations and maintenance of the facility. And how is this funded? Like a lot of the things that alluded to will largely depend on the type of partnership, the type of development that is happening, whether it's city, whether it's along with a pub, like a private partner, P3 type scenario could have an impact on that, the operations piece, whether it's city, private, how you mitigate that could have an impact. But from our research and in preparing the budget discussions, we do believe that the city should expect to partially fund the operations component. I don't know how much, but to expect to partially fund the operations component likely until the performing arts center stabilizes. And, you know, we've said that could be five years to 10 years before there's some kind of stabilization. And with that wraps up the discussion about budget funding and operations. One more video, one more. Sir, I think there's one more.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, community members, thank you for having us. We're still very excited to be here.
and paint this graphic for you all to see the potential. And we want you to understand that it's, that your community has great potential and that's what we're trying to communicate here to do. So we were very excited, mostly because you have a very unique community, and I think that, I can speak for all of us, and that's why we're all here. The community being special, this is the obvious. And I think Stoney expressed interest, interest in having this plane, so I'm gonna loan it to him for the rest of the, for the rest of the day. I didn't have any questions that he had.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our portion. Any questions?
Well, thank you for that wonderful presentation. At this time, we can go ahead and open up the public comment. So welcome all the comments, questions. I just asked, can you come forward, give your name and address? And we've got three minutes. And if you have a question, just go ahead and just ask your question. We won't answer it right now. We're gonna have that jotted down, and then we'll have the Hattie team answer that question and then after we close up all this comment, we're gonna turn it over to the council. So who wants to be the first one to go up and give their comments? Not everybody wants, but...
Brenda Smith, Taverius Historical Society and Citizen. That was a very good presentation. It's exciting what can happen, but is there some way that we can redo the art, the design? Because it just, it's a box sitting right next to our beautiful City Hall. And the City Hall takes on the looks of the city. It's almost gonna be like the round courthouse when they set it right down in the middle of Taverius, right next to the beautiful historical courthouse that we have there. We've got this beautiful City Hall with bricks and then the square. I would just send a city that is very conscious of their history, and that's Pensacola. And it is a city that's on the bay and all of their buildings, the new, brand-new buildings are being built in the architectural design of some of the past, not all the way in the past, but the looks of the past. And I think when Mr. Dury and all of us had that citizens, well, Mr. Dury, I don't think you were there, then, citizens forum of what we wanted the city to look like, it was more in the line of Savannah or in that area of South Florida or New Orleans or in that style, but not just an ultra-modern box that was sitting there. So, I mean, it's just something that just didn't fit with me as the looks of it. The ideas are good. Where you're putting it is okay, if that's what we want. And then we have to be careful about how we're going to be able to afford it, which I'm sure you've answered a lot of questions. But anyway, that was my idea, as I just, just was not exactly pleased with what it looked amongst the other buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Are there any other members in the audience that would like to ask a question or make a comment?
Linda Mahaney, I just have a comment. I'm all for performing arts, however, this does not belong downtown. We have courthouses here, administration's building for the county and the city, and it's hard enough to find a marketplace to get down there. So it's a great thing, but it donates the entire town to areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes? Come on up.
My name is Elizabeth Jones, and I also live in Taverius, Florida. And I too have some concerns about the construction of the building and the architecture, the way it looks. I also feel as though it does not belong in this downtown area, but this is pretty much all the place that it can be. I don't like the look of it. First off, the glass. Why I put glass? I mean, we're already, you live in the state of Florida. You put glass, it's gonna, it's gonna get hot in there. So, and then we also have the, I also have concerns about the outside dining area. It's close to the lake. We live in Florida, mosquitoes. It's gonna eat everybody up. So, and then we have blind mosquitoes that would be on the outside. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say, with stuff like that. And is there any way that we can't do a parking garage? We just did one. So, I mean, and it's not, if there are a long few of these performing performances at night, why can't we use a parking garage that's down the street? It gets used during the day for the courthouse, but at night it's open. Sorry, excuse me. So... So I'll see that we should have to put in another parking garage. That costs more money for us as local residents. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Just hang on.
Hi, I'm Paul Young, I'm from New York, Los Angeles, Ohio. And I was speaking with this man here, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, but he says this structure is going to be four stories high. Does anybody have a concern about this blocking, any other structures, the view from saying, or how this would impact airflow or anything else that might be programmed, shades that is cast on other buildings from a standpoint there? I didn't see anything about that. It's four stories, it's only 45 feet apart. So I don't know what's allowed downtown, but that's certainly not allowed in rural areas. So I'll go think about it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, all right.
Nancy O'Grady, as you know, I do not live in the city of Taveras, so I'm always happy to see Taveras taxpayers pay for things like this that I could go to without having to pay the property tax, billings rate that Taveras has. I agree with the lady that talked at the beginning, is travel all over the world and moved here from California where we had a fantastic performing arts center in Orange County, as well as in downtown Los Angeles. I've been to all of them down there while I was there. And I would say, though, that having your brick finished here and then putting in a modern structure right next to it, kind of, to me, kind of great. And I would think that you probably want to come up with some way, I mean, maybe just keep the glass, because I understand it's a signature element, instead of incorporating brick and the facade look that you have to make some more continental in town. But that's my thoughts. But otherwise, I'm in favor of y'all building this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just hang on.
Doug Murphy, and I live at 1723 Sunrise Court in Taveras. And I have a functional question, or at least thought, with the dining on the roof and black box, smaller use, just wondering catering, food service, liquor license type things. I didn't see any mention of how you would manage reception type functions that would be there. I'm not sure what floor plan looks like, other than that, but I'm just thinking that that would be an issue.
Thank you. We have time for some more. Anybody else? Let's see, no other public comment? We're gonna go ahead and, Mr. Drury, I believe you were jotting those questions down, maybe we could have our Haskel team come forward, and I think there was some other questions that the staff could help answer, or whatever you do.
Yeah, I'll go through what I heard, and we'll see if there's any answers that should be provided. I think one of the comments was the mixing the glass with the brick, architecturally. I think one comment was that that was something that that person didn't like. So that's, I guess, not really a question, just an observation that the mixing the glass with the brick and not something that that person liked. There was one comment about it shouldn't be in downtown, and there was another comment about mosquitoes on the outside dining that could occur. I think there was a question about can you use the county garage? I guess I can comment to that. So Lake County built an eight-story garage off of Main Street to support a government center. And we all probably remember that a government center was spread all through downtown. And about 12 years ago, community came together and said it'd be nice if all the governmental operations went to a campus, kind of like a college campus. And so the city worked for 10 years to move all government functions, clerk of court, driver, probation, parole, all the things that were all over Main Street, and move them all to the government center. And after the government campus was created in the west end of Main Street, Lake County built a parking garage for the government center, for the courthouse for the government center. And it was closed at nighttime. That's where they store all their vehicles and things of that nature. The city of Taveras asked if we could open it a few times a year when there was large special events. Lake County worked an agreement with the city of Taveras where we could use the eight-story parking garage during large special events, and we do from time to time, do use that garage for that. And we're not very interested in having the county parking garage used consistently as the city's parking garage. So that's kind of the history of the parking garage. I think there was another concern of is the building too high? I think it's 64 feet is the zoning for this area. Most of you have been out to see Osprey Lodge, it's probably, what, five stories high? This area here is about 64 feet as far as the current zoning for the downtown. Of course, that went through the comp plan, master plan, public input, you know, many years of that to result in where the heights would be for that. And then there was, again, how do you cater on the roof? And how does that all function? I'll say that, you know, at this point, the council and the community are doing a due diligence on where would a performing arts center go if it came? And of course, that was a year-long process of public input, of select a site. How many seats would be? How big would it be? What would it cost? Where would the funding come from? And so these are questions that the council had and the public had that had been answered. The next phase will be to find out whether or not the city, knowing where it would be located, how big it would be, what it would cost, where would the funding, whether the city would want to move to the next phase, which is funding it. After that, if the city decided to move forward and fund it, then you would begin to design, engineer, get into the aesthetics, get into the catering, get into the whole operation. So just so everybody realizes, this hasn't been designed, it hasn't been engineered, no architectural decisions have been made. This is more of a conceptual, where would it go? What might it look like? How big would it be? What would it cost? Information for the council and the community to look at. The details of where the elevator's gonna be, what kind of restaurant's gonna be there, how many exactly seats, what the architectural look is gonna, that is going to go when they actually hire a design team to actually design it, engineer it, and build it. And it'll be quite a public process when we go through that. So these are all concepts at this point, sort of scope of size, scope of cost, so that the community can decide whether they even want to go down to the next, the next point. I guess the only thing you might talk about, because it was said twice, is this concept of blending a glass with a brick from an architectural perspective, pros and cons of that, views of that.
Sure. That's a key decision point for communities and clients that have worked in the past. Oftentimes, you're always working in and around historic buildings.
Can you take that a little bit, please?
Oftentimes, you're in and around historic places, and whether you choose to continue to design buildings in that same modality or for other reasons, you may decide to create a fresh image. For instance, recently, we just worked on the Coast Guard project in San Diego, New Jersey, that was in historic district. So we had to work with the Park Service to recast buildings that were initially designed for the Coast Guard, modern style, and create them in a historic style that was in keeping with the historic park, so that all visitors could come, feel that spirit of the place. Here, we suggested glass in opposition to the city hall. So the city hall, as it's been said, is quite handsome. Residents associate that with the community. And so if we were to continue to use that architectural language directly, the performing arts center, which is a completely different use, could be read as an addition to city hall. People may misinterpret the building as being more city offices and not something unique in and of itself. And so we chose to pursue glass. Some of the things that happen with glass that are interesting as well is that the historic buildings can be reflected in glass. And so you see that aspect implied during the day, and so it can relate in that manner. But there's, it's just curious, saying that many other architectural decisions could be made, that was just the first pass at thinking essentially that that this is a new activity for Taveras, and it would have its own look that's different from the city hall and not continually a very historic preservation of the look or just a historic looking general. Thank you very much. We're gonna discuss amongst council, but Vice Mayor Mr. Drury, I know you've been driving for many years and also are representative of the Haskel team, so I don't know if you have any questions or comments or...
Not really, other than all the questions that I heard and the remarks, just like Mr. Drury explained, we have not even begun with the architectural, you know, design of this building. We've given them some ideas, they've given us some ideas, but that's gonna be in another phase. We're not gonna spend any money on that until we, until we know that the citizens want this. And if the citizens want this, then I'm sure, again, will be an open door meeting where y'all will come in and we'll get your ideas as to the dos and the don'ts. And I can tell this is a very historic city, so I know that we're going to have to stay within those margins, and I understand that, and I'm fine with that. But all the other things that were addressed, those are things that we haven't really addressed yet. We chose this site because it was city-owned property. We already owned the property, so we're not taking anything off the tax rolls. So, plus, your downtown really is the heart of your, of your city. It's the heart of the city. So we want to keep the downtown alive. So the decision of where the thing is going was a good one, and we had a lot of meetings that we, we invited all the public to come and, you know, give their input. And so that's how we chose the site. So I'm real happy with the site. And Mr. Drury did explain about the parking garage, because it's not ours. I wish it was, but it is not the city's, it is the county's. So we desperately need someone to mention that when they come downtown, they have a hard time finding a parking place. Well, this will alleviate those issues when you do come downtown. So other than that, I'm real happy with the process. I think, as I said, the next step is gonna be, you know, whether or not the public want this done, and we're figuring out the money end of this. And so, once we get that figured out, and the public say, yes, we do want this in our city, like I said, then we're gonna invite everyone, because this will be your performing arts. It's you, the residents, you will own this. So I'm just looking forward to see what the future brings.
Thank you. Ms. Bobbi, if you'd like to...
Not for Haskel.
Mr. Smith?
I just got a couple of, a couple of things. First of all, thank you for doing the work you've done, giving a presentation. That's pretty cool. In the next phase, are you going to be doing, and what I would like to see is like Mount Gore's performing arts center, what is their debt service and what is their income? Because I've noticed that I've got a couple of things where Clark was charged in, you know, for shows. But what I'm looking at the numbers, it depends on how much they spent on the building. I don't know what the, what the income is compared to the debt service and how much more would the city have to put into it to keep it going. That'd be something I'd be really interested in, if you could do that, not only if you can or not, but I would like to know if this will be self-sufficient or if it's gonna be a burden on the citizens back for the next 50 years.
Thank you. Well, I do appreciate you coming in. You did a wonderful job. Thank you for the presentation. As I was saying, so you'll be back at the next council meeting for a final draft? Yes, that's correct. We'll take what we appear here today, and we'll be in the policy report, and make it prepared to be back here April 17, I believe is the date, to hand off the final report. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for coming in, and we will look forward to seeing your final presentation at the next council meeting. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to tab number seven, update on marketing and promotion of professional services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, your economic development, Bob Tweed. Previously, the council requested that staff move forward with an RFP, request for proposals for professional services for marketing and promotions, firm to represent the city in marketing and promoting the downtown special and seaplane base and other aspects. There currently is no budget in the, there's no, there's no allocation in the current year's budget for, for that service. And in talking to several firms, as we sort of initiated this process and engaged some communication, the first question is, what's the budget? So what we feel might be most prudent to do at this point in moving forward with this process is to further refine the sculpt and area specifically to be included in this RFP. And we've included a draft RFP that the staff has developed, it's interpacted, it reflects your current strategic economic development plan and focus area. Develop a budget line item for consideration in this year's F20 budget process. As we move forward with that process, concurrently refine that RFP and, and time it so that it's initiated and released at the time that if it does survive that RFP or that budget process with a, with a budget allocation and line item, we will release the RFP and move forward and select a firm. So we're just looking for, at this point, for your feedback on, on the draft RFP and how you want to move forward with this, if you'd like to go forward with that process that we, as we've outlined here, in developing the budget and moving forward with it concurrently with the budget process. Back to you, Mayor, to answer any questions or, or the comments you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tweed. So do you have any questions, Mr. Tweed?
So, Bob, just so I'm understanding this correctly, we want to do an RFP now to get, to get a number back, so we can budget it for the 2020 year?
No, we want to budget dollars in the upcoming budget so that the people who develop proposals will know how much money you have to work with. Is it $10,000 that you're gonna spend on marketing, or is it 100%?
Okay, I was thinking about...
So we will, we will have the money, we'll put it in the budget.
Okay, sir. All right, thanks. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Tweed, I appreciate that. So you know what you need to do. No, I don't think, I think we didn't go in the right direction.
I don't see a direction to the direction we're going.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're gonna move on to, let's see, tab number eight, City Council, consideration to amend dumpster enclosure material regulation. We need to develop it.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Mr. Smith has a question before we take this item up.
Okay. Counselor, I have a couple of questions for you. One is on the materials. I believe my father is the one that brought that up, so I'm assuming that I cannot have discussion or talk about that one.
You are correct.
You know, I did wake up my mother one time, so...
You're probably still paying.
All right. The second question is, is the grandfather in issue? I believe he's up to date on that, but is that going on the grandfather issue or...
You don't have a concrete on the grandfather issue.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other issue coming up?
I think it was, yeah, materials, grandfather issue, I think that's probably it. So you would stay... So you would just name from...
From the metal, but, yeah, from the material, but grandfathering.
I think so. And I think our, you can introduce the whole subject matter and then the mayor could take it into two different components. One would be the material and dispose of that issue. And one would be grandfather and dispose of that issue. And that'll help separate your involvement in it. Does that work?
And a third issue of industrial exemption.
Oh, there is an industrial exemption issue. There's a third one there. I don't think you have a conflict there.
If it's a general, if general citywide change to the ordinance, the fact that Kirby is banning land and industrial property doesn't.
Okay, so we'll break it into three issues.
Hey, Mr. Smith, we are going to be taking public comment in just one moment, but we're going to go ahead and get things started. So we'll be calling on you.
Thank you, Mayor. City staff received a citizen's request that city council consider a land development regulation amendment that would expand the allowable dumpster enclosure materials permitted under chapter eight of our regulations by adding corrugated metal. City staff also received a citizen's request that businesses existing prior to the city's requirement for dumpster enclosures be exempt from compliance with the regulation. And after publication of the staff report in your council packet, staff received a request that industrial zoning districts be either exempted as a whole or at least for large roll-off dumpsters, you have an exemption from the dumpster enclosure requirement. Just for some background, in 2005, the city council adopted the ordinance that adopted early in development regulations that called for dumpsters to be enclosed with brick, block, and stucco enclosures that matched the facade of the building. No grandfathering clause was put in place. And the city attorneys applied that all businesses would have to comply and none were grandfathered in. New businesses complied and many existing businesses did not. In 2010, the city amended the code to make it less restrictive and less costly by allowing PVC vinyl fence of any color. And once again, new businesses complied and many existing businesses did not. On September 10th, 2017, Hurricane Irma hit Florida knocking down the wooden fence behind Joanne's Fabrics and the dumpster enclosure at the BP gas station, exposing dumpsters at BP and Joanne's Fabrics. Residents behind Joanne's called to complain that the dumpsters should be enclosed. Medical office next door to BP station called and requested that dumpsters should be enclosed there as well. Other residents called about dumpsters in town not being enclosed. Joanne's Fabrics has since enclosed all of their dumpsters except for one. Code enforcement conducted a citywide dumpster inspection and sent out 177 letters in June of 2018 giving all of those six months to comply with the dumpster enclosure ordinance. In December 2018, after the six-month window had passed, reinspection occurred and it was found that 66 came into full compliance, leaving 51 not in compliance. And of the 51 remaining, 31 had no enclosure, 16 enclosed their dumpsters with the wrong material with chain link, wood, or corrugated metal, and four removed their dumpsters completely. At their February 20th, 19, I'm sorry, February 20th, 2019 meeting, the city council received an update from the city administrator on the dumpster enclosure issue. After public input and discussion by council, city council's consensus was for code enforcement to contact the remaining property owners about their code violation and provide an update to council as a result. The code enforcement officer personally called every business that remained out of compliance. In some cases, he left messages. In some cases, he spoke with business representatives. He then sent letters giving the businesses that remained out of compliance another three months. After the letters went out, some more dumpsters got enclosed and some did not. Just to note, once the three months pass, code enforcement will have the numbers for council updated as far as how many dumpsters are outstanding. Staff is recommending that council discuss this item and provide staff with direction. And there are three options tonight for council to consider. That would be to direct staff to amend the enclosure materials by adding corrugated metal, to direct staff to amend the dumpster enclosure materials by adding corrugated metal, and grandfathering businesses in that were established prior to 2001, and the consideration of exempting industrial zoning districts. And then, of course, council may move to take no action.
All right. Thanks, Mike. All right, this time we're going to open up a public comment. I did have some request to speak forums that were turned in. So I'm going to go ahead and take those first. And then anybody else that is in the audience that would like to speak, there are going to be more than welcome too. I'm going to go ahead and start off. We have Mr. Gene Smith.
My name is Gene Smith. We've been in business here for 65 years. Never closed a single day unless it was a holiday. Which had nothing to do with why I'm up. Needless to say, you all know that I received a letter a few months ago about the dumpster enclosure. I was thrilled. But anyway, I read the letter and it said that we should take off any chain link that we had on the dumpster enclosure and replace it with vinyl. And if we had a dumpster that didn't have an enclosure, we should build an enclosure and use vinyl on that also. So I kept thinking about that. I said, you know, we can do better than this. I went out and measured the height of the dumpster by our office building down there, which the county built. So I knew it had to be up to code. The county built that dumpster, but it was only five feet high. I said, well, we'll make it six feet. So down at the corner of Door Avenue and Alfred Street, we have another dumpster pad with no enclosure. We booked an enclosure there. We booked that enclosure out of two-by-two steel tubing, all welded joint, wrote it down and bolted to an existing pad. And I assure you, it'll be there if you're willing. So about the vinyl, I kept thinking about that. That vinyl is subject to sun, it cracks. It's subject to impacts, vandalism, storms. And I'm not sure you can get it in all colors. So it's not corrugated metal, but it's wall metal that we use for our dumpster enclosure. 26 gauge, we've got your colors picked out there for you to watch to have a different color. But actually, for our screen, our screen blends in with the landscaping, the trees and bushes, whatever you have there. And it looks very good. I tell you how good that green is. I was in my office the other day and I took some trash out. I went down the steps and I couldn't find the dumpster. Oh, there it is, right there. It's so good that when I go home every day from the office, I don't go down Alfred Street, but that's the short way. I go down Main Street and turn on Door just so I can see if I can still see it.
Does it look anything like the one up there in the screen? Does it look like the one up there? This screen right here.
Oh, that is it. That's pretty nice. I didn't know it was up there. I want to tell you the truth.
You couldn't even find it with a little screen.
With all those trees in the background, if you drive down the street, it's pretty nice in there. I like it. The only thing I ask you to do is all of these folks that put vinyl up already, I hope that grandfathering and y'all look back and change it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, we have Gary Centoro.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Gary Centoro of Royal Harbor. First and foremost, great job. You thought outside the box. Am I in favor of changing the ordinance to put that in there? No. Am I in favor of getting city staff the opportunity to approve materials like that because it either meets or exceeds? Absolutely. And you can do that with one thing. You can change one word. And there it says solid vinyl fencing or other similar. Take similar out and put in approved. City staff was the one that put together this ordinance. They do a great job every single day. You delegate the authority down to Mr. Drury, down to staff. Why not let them make the call? Do you want to deal with this every time somebody comes up with a great idea like this? You shouldn't have to. Staff should be able to deal with this on a regular basis. As far as grandfathering, you're going to go back 18 years. All those, for 18 years, people have been formed. I don't think you want to do that. There's so many different ways out there. Let them go to staff and let staff approve it. But something like that, yes, let it be approved, but don't change the ordinance. Great job, Mr. Smith. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Centoro. Next, we have Bill Stomp.
Bill Stomp, also from Royal Harbor. Got a little story to tell. Royal Harbor was required to put in a dumpster enclosure. And it came as a surprise. It's like, oh, my gosh, it's been there for a long time. It's never bothered anybody. It's been supplied, it's been a good neighbor. That dumpster was really quiet and it bothered anyone. But we decided as a community, you know, that's what the community wants. That's what the city wants, we're going to do it. So an enclosure was put up. And there's a whole lot of people that said, hey, this is a waste, this is kind of a waste of money. Well, we put out this enclosure. It turned out to be beautiful. It's an enhancement to the city, to our community. It really looks nice. They did a good job. It's, and the end result is, I'm glad you haven't spent that. It really approved the sight picture of our community. So I thank you very much. And I guess my line is, I do support the idea of having enclosures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stomp. Mr. Yopen, you had filled out a request to speak on Tuesday. I believe it's eight.
Yes.
That would be nice.
I want to talk about this one real quick.
Ben, you're open again. Mr. Sturrock, did you write that explanation of the new package?
You look good in shorts.
The city manager and myself were...
What I wanted to say was that I really appreciate you giving the background on that. I thought that was a very good perspective about the work you guys did to go through that. And I appreciate it and would recommend. Because the county, in their presentations, they always have one or two pages that lead off with giving the background and or reminding what happened last year, what got us here. And so something like that, I think, was very helpful. The other thing is, maybe you could add a birdhouse on top of it. On top of these little structures, other than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yopen. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Ralph Smith. I'm the owner of Lake Tire Auto and 441. Next stop is Park and Nuthers Fish Camp. Been here 32 years, opened in June 19, 1987. Going up on the 32nd couple of months. Back in 87, opened up. We did have an enclosure around a dumpster. Back then, stock gate fence was approved. It was obviously, I had to get my CO. So we did what we had to do to get that done. Problem with stock gate fence is 32 years later, it disintegrates. Actually, it did that long before then. And then about, I guess, 15, late 90s, there was a little restaurant next door, a fish camp. It's been probably seven, eight restaurants since I've been there. They opened up and they put in, because they did not have a place for dumpsters, so they used mine, I allowed them to use it. And because we don't leave that much trash, to be honest with you. And so in any case, he ended up putting a fence around it, chain link fence with slides in there. And that worked very good until one day the dumpster truck hit the fence and damaged it and so therefore it was kind of messed up, so he took it down. And actually, one of the poles still remains from that because it was anchored in the ground. My situation is today, mine is, if I may, can I show this picture I took this morning? I just want to give you an idea with you guys. My thought on it is, the whole idea behind the dumpster enclosure, as I understand it, is it's aesthetically enhanced. And jeans looks great and, you know, green grass, everything, blue sky. I think that helps a little too. But it's, different venues have different needs. When this thing came up and I was told I needed to spend $2,500 and go through an architectural review and put the enclosure around a dumpster at a tire store that has been no complaint-driven issues that I'm aware of. Historically, I believe the city has addressed these things when an individual, a resident, or someone complains about something because it's on the right of way. And I did find out my dumpster's on the right of way. It wasn't put there by me. It was put by the people contract out to haul off the garbage. We just put garbage in, they put it there and put it. So this morning, if you looked at the picture, we went ahead and moved it over there back on our property on the right of way. Now, I'll tell you, if it wasn't there, you would see underneath the trailer, a waste tire trailer, you'd see a lot of stuff, junk, tires, that sort of thing. And so from the standpoint of that, if I left the dumpster where it was, which there's no complaints about that, and put the enclosure around it, I think if you were to look at that and see the stuff underneath the trailer, you could look at it and say, that's not a subtract. You might, and I believe, when I talked to Mr. Drury, we could sort of go too. We discussed the situation. My business is about 6,500, 0.65 of an acre. And there's a lot of right of way too on there. So we have limited space. We're extremely physical patient. We have people in and out, those y'all have been there some multiple times. And so getting a garbage truck in there on Thursday morning, eight, 30, 9, 10, whenever they get there, can be a problem as well. And so therefore, I like what the second gentleman said from Royal Harbor, not Bill Stomp, the other gentleman, it's give you a staff, the latitude to do jobs. The only danger in that is 12, 13 years ago or previous regime, before John Drury came here, we had a staff that took advantage of this and it's very restricted, very hard to get along with, very anti-business. We don't have that anymore. And I don't think you have a council like that anywhere either. It's for the grandfather calls.
Mr. Smith, we need to kind of wrap it up.
Can we tie it up?
Yes.
I've never tied anything in three minutes.
Three minutes is, it heads out, so.
All right.
Wrap it up real quick.
Okay. It's for the grandfather calls. I've always understood that was a, something that, you know, when we passed the amendment that limited presidents to two terms, we had a president that was in his third term. So he was not allowed to finish that term. He wasn't allowed, because that's the way the rule was. And so whenever you make a change of ownership or business or I decide to do a major construction, I understand I have to get a retention pond and all that kind of stuff as well and different things. And so that's what, I guess, is a catalyst for that sort of thing. So I've always loved the grandfather calls as a basic right of business in the nation. So I hope you guys are not going to that route. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? All right. So right now, we're going to take it with the material first. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think you can discuss whether or not to amend the ordinance to allow other materials. And if you go that direction, we'll amend the ordinance. Might be the change in one word or two words. We'll look at it with our city attorney. And if you authorize, if you authorize an amendment to the ordinance to permit other materials, we'll bring that back to you for approval.
And the record reflects that Councilmember Smith has a conflict? So does that matter?
Yeah, in this particular motion and this particular discussion, Councilmember Smith will not be participating.
Well, then, I'd like to make a motion that...
Well, then, I'd like to make a motion that we take Mr. Sandoval's advice and let it be handled at staff level, as far as the materials.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. It's just a motion, so.
You do a second, but...
Second.
Well, then, depends on whether I second or not to the questions. Okay. If you second for discussion, you don't want to vote.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor. If there is no second, it will die for lack of second.
Correct.
Is there a second?
No, am I able to second when you pass?
You'd have to pass the gavel to...
I'll pass the gavel to Vice Mayor. I will second that for discussion.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, and now, Ms. Pister is running the meeting.
Yes, so go ahead with your question.
I guess my question is, do we even need to change the language of the regulations since the way I read it, it says "or other similar material," saying that refers to gates must be solid or may be constructed of wood or similar material. I think that's a catch-all, finding solid materials, because it highlighted what is a solid material, that explicitly says... Is that Article three catch-all language? Or...
I was kind of, I wasn't sure what question you were going to ask me, so I was kind of, before I jumped in. I love Gary's idea, too, but the problem is that you can't give unbridled discretion to a staff member under the Constitution. So if you're going to have a regulation, you can prohibit certain materials, you can allow certain materials, but you can't say, "Mike, you can decide whether you like it or not." And so my suggestion, if you're going to do that, is to put in descriptive words in. Don't just say any covering that the TMZ director approves, but put some suggestions in there that it can be wood, PVC, and then, or put in there what it can't be. It can't be chain link, it can't be aluminum strips, or plastic strips, or whatever you want to do, but you can't leave that completely to him. That will fail.
So because metal's not addressing the explicit things that it can't be, and it's not explicitly saying that it's what could be, we would not add somewhere, we would drop metal?
I think we would have to put, I think that if you're going to allow the metal like jeans got, I think you should put metal as an acceptable enclosure. Generally, the general rule of statute is that if it includes a list and it doesn't include the thing you want it for, then it's, it was not included for purpose.
So, how should I rescind the motion or...
A motion's fine, but I would recommend you all amend it and put something in there that gives some guidance to TMZ if you want to allow stuff other than stucco and white PVC.
So I'm giving you back the gavel, and I'm going to amend my motion to exclude metal as a material.
And there would be, there would need to be a second to that amendment.
Then I'll second that amendment to your resume. To the ordinance.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero.
So you have now amended the motion. Now you can vote on it.
So now you, you just, we voted that it was okay to amend the motion, so now ask for a re-vote.
Yeah, the amended, the amended motion is to add metal, metal as a suitable material to dumpster enclosures.
Bob, can I ask a question? This does not include chain link fence. This is corrugated metal as, as...
Yeah, we probably, chain link fences are made of metal, so somebody would probably raise that.
Right, so I'm going to amend the amended motion to add no chain link.
Or, or if you want to, I don't know what that is, which, what do you call that?
Corrugated metal.
We're just, we're just all...
It's just a steel panel.
I'll second the solid, or second the amended. The amended is...
Those are now we follow that.
Okay, well, so now we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero.
Now we vote on the motion as I was already...
So now, all those in favor?
Aye.
So that, it's not in effect yet, but we will amend the ordinance as you construct it. If you construct it, it will come back for two reals.
Okay. All right, so now, the record reflects that Councilmember Smith is back in participation. Now we're going to move on to the second part of this, which is the grandfather clause. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion that we allow grandfathered businesses, or I'll make a motion to be grandfathered in businesses that were in business prior to two thousand and one ordinance.
Do we have a motion? And a second? So the motion fails?
I'm not sure where to go with this one, to be honest with you. I understand about wanting to be grandfathered, I understand that, but I also understand all the businesses that have conformed. There's why I'm having the problem. So there's a lot of other businesses who could have been grandfathered in, but they chose to do what we asked them to do.
So I kind of view it like this. You buy a house, and it's an old house, and you want to renovate it. Well, when you pull a permit to renovate the house, I'm going to bring everything up to current codes. If I didn't pull a permit to renovate the house, I can live in that house. So I kind of like the idea of, if you, if we grandfathered all the businesses in, and the minute they pull a permit, now they got to come up to the new standard code, I would be okay with that. But they do not do anything, then, or...
Yeah, because I, I mean, I have a hard time with the, you know, coming up with an ordinance and then forcing a business to comply with that ordinance. And I realize that this is eighteen years old, but, you know, I'm, I do like the idea of, you know, if we do the grandfathering in, goodness, my understanding, if I'm wrong, that if they pull a permit, they would have to come into compliance. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think you could, you could amend the ordinance to say that businesses prior to two thousand and five, is that when the ordinance was written?
Two thousand and five.
Five. We had one in there that's a scripter's area, it's two thousand and five. So business, written business prior to two thousand and five, are grandfathered in, but if you pull a permit to renovate a building, this is more of a legal question, you have to come up, you know, come into compliance with law codes, including the dumpster code.
Vice Mayor, speak a little bit about the concept of consulting grandfathering. What we call grandfathering is really pre-existing non-conforming use. And what the law says, that if you've got a pre-existing use that becomes non-conforming based on the adoption of a new ordinance or regulations, that the pre-existing use can continue unless it's expanded or renovated or changed. So that's where the term that we call grandfathering comes from. Pre-existing use, non-conforming pre-existing use law is the law of the land anyway, regardless if you put that into your ordinance. So anybody who has a pre-existing non-conforming use, that's a legal pre-existing non-conforming use, legitimately has an argument if you change the rules and require them to change. The reason that I have given the opinion that I think your ordinance is valid as is, is because you gave them an amortization period, and that although the ordinance was passed in oh-five or ten, or whenever it was, you've allowed a reasonable period of time. And generally, the courts look at that at about seven years. That's where all the sign cases come from. So if you see a city that outlaws billboards, you have to give the billboard company an amortization period before you can require them to remove it. And you all did that with the dumpsters. So I think you can legally enforce dumpster enclosures now, even if people, and like perhaps Mr. Smith, had legal dumpsters that weren't fenced when they first started business there. If you decide you want to allow certain dumpsters, existing dumpsters to remain, I don't want to use the word grandfather in there. What we want to do is use the effective date. So it would say something like, "This ordinance shall not apply to any dumpsters that were legally located prior to whatever the date was." Grandfathering has too many different terms and meanings to everybody else. So I think, I think your decision needs to be, if you want to allow certain existing legal dumpsters to remain, then you need to check, give a date where it's going to apply, and where, you know, if it was legal as of this date, it doesn't apply, it's legal after this date, if it's after this date, then it hasn't applied.
Now, how does that work with the federal school's permit?
Well... I think you can, you can make the rule yourself, but I mean, the law, the law on pre-existing non-conforming uses is if there's a change in use or an expansion of the existing use. So if they pull a permit, put up a ceiling fan, does that mean they have to put a dumpster around there? There's, you know, their, their fence around their dumpsters is pre-existing? Probably not. They put a, they pull a permit to do a major renovation, or put a new roof on, you take a parking lot, maybe it does. So that's a, it's a matter of...
Counsel?
Do you want to make yours again?
I'm going to try.
I'd like to make a motion that we, I forgot what you told me, Bob. That we allow dumpsters to remain as they are if they were, the way they were prior to, when the new ordinance was written in two thousand and five, up until they pull a permit for renovations of buildings or space, at that time, they would have to incorporate a dumpster enclosure.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
The date of the ordinance, but this is your motion, kind of like that they had to be legal as of the time of that date. For instance, you've always had, I mean, ever since I can remember, you had an ordinance that required a dumpster enclosure of some sort. So on two thousand and five, if there was somebody that had a dumpster that was not fenced and that was illegal, that just hadn't gotten called yet, you're not grandfathering in that dumpster.
Correct.
You're only one, if you had a, if you had a wooden enclosure and wood was allowed before the five, then you'll allow that, which you might allow anywhere.
I would say that, you're right.
That's right. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's what you said.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Motion carries three, one.
I don't hold out for that one.
Thank you.
Now, the other one is industrial dumpsters. So you have, you have an industrial park, and there are large roll-ops, and there are many of them that can't comply with enclosing large roll-ops, because now you're talking thousands and thousands of dollars. The question is, are you willing to not apply this ordinance to industrial zone properties? So we amend the ordinance. The motion would be, we have to amend the ordinance to not apply to industrial zone properties, against the dumpster enclosures.
If they can't comply, what, or what, what would you do to them?
They're not prescribed to...
But those are awful things.
We can't make them do that at this time. I mean, maybe someone will invent something that's better.
Well, the way I see it, industrial parks are just that, the industrial manufacturing people, you know, they use big, heavy equipment, they have big, heavy containers, they're coming with big, heavy trucks, they'll go to big, heavy containers, and it's an industrial park. That's what, that's what they do, they do industrial stuff.
So can I make a motion to, to waive this to the industrial park at this time?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to waive this ordinance for industrial...
You can't really waive it if you can amend the ordinance.
Yeah, you know, that's what I'm going to say.
All right, so a motion is to amend the ordinance, that this does not apply to industrial dumpsters.
You know, at this time, or something.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero. Now we are going to move on to task number nine. Council goals for administrators to accomplish next year. Mr. Drury?
Every year, the council does an performance evaluation on the city administrator and reviews prior year goals and establishes them, and establishes new goals. You have done that. I'm going to read the goals into the record. If there are any goals that you believe should not be part of the goals to work on, this would be the time to suspend, and that goal will be removed. If there's a goal that you would like to add in addition to the ones you already had, this would be the time to do it. After you adopt this list, then these are the goals that your city administrator will work on with the leadership team to accomplish over the next year. And you will get a status report in one year as to what happened to those goals. So with that, I'll just read them pretty quickly, and if you see a goal that you want more information on, or think we ought to not be doing, then you need to say, "I'd like to talk on that." And we'll remove it or talk about it. So here goes. Set a deadline to have seaplane base and marina fully functional. Focus on aesthetics throughout the entire city. Educate the former residents about city, about the city and events. Rebuild Wooton Wonderland. Maintain and improve infrastructure for the future. Take the performing arts center to its next step as directed by the city council. Develop a senior center. Expand a library. Get downtown parking garage going in the downtown. Develop a marketing program for the entertainment district. Secure additional businesses for the downtown that complement the downtown. Rebuild the seaplane base and marina. Continue to expand and implement the seaplane city brand. Grow the mayor's youth council program. Expand the relationship between the city and the various schools. West Main Street, for CDBG grant funding. Historical museum. St. Clair Abrams, Stormwater, Buried Lines, walking streets, walking streetlights, bike wheeling, and look at Stormwater ramps. Public Works Design. Complete the marina. Outside activity workout stations for various parks. Utilize the various square more. Keep the mileage rate at the same rate. Help county clean up Old Four Forty Run corridor. Incorporate additional initiatives as directed throughout the year. Educate the youth. Senior care, water quality, continue downtown, integration with community. So those are the lists that I'm going to be working on. Is there anything you'd like to remove or add? If not, motion without the list would be in order.
We do have a request to speak on this. We have Mr. Gary Santoro.
I also had one, number nine. Gary Santoro, well, I remember these days when our city council used to put down the mandates on our town manager, and the next day the staff meeting the town manager would say, "These are our objectives," because his objectives are their objectives. I look at all these objectives, they can all be taken, they can all be left, but I like Mr. Smith about the, about the tax base. But there's two things I think that are missing here, about the maintaining the level of services that we currently have today, and maintaining and possibly adding to the level of employees that we have today. The city is growing. We're not a very RFD anymore. And as we continue to build more and more... And as we continue to build more and more houses, there's going to be more and more demand on city services. Now, you can hire that out to, to private companies, but it really should be your, your city employees because they have the most about the city. So I think that needs to be put in. I'm sure Mr. Drury is not going to ask for additional staff because he knows that there's, there's probably nothing in the, in the city council that's going to say, yeah, okay, let's add more staff. But I think it's important. You want the man to do it, do his job and give him the tools to do it. And the tools include giving these people the staff that they need to perform and also to maintain and maybe do a little bit more for city services. But as we build more and more single-family houses, we're not getting very much more work ethic. It's all, it's all city, one and two-family houses. And where it's going to put the most demand on city services, one and two-family houses. And who's going to have to put in on that? These people. So at least give the man the opportunity that if he sees that there's an addition that we need additional staff, let him at least talk about it without being afraid of getting shot down by city staff. But I also like Mr. Smith said about maintaining it. Probably not going to be able to do it, but you need to maintain the level of services that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. Good point. Mr. Yocum.
Hi, Manny Yocum, again. I just looked at, I, and like, I always like to share with you maybe some ideas that come from the business world, having worked in large corporations, is that there wasn't anything really that was measurable or deadlines in this list. And maybe Mr. Drury's going to come back and give you those kinds of things in the future. But what I urge you to do is to think big. And let's start with one thing, is instead of saying improve traffic, is set a goal to measure the traffic, the speed of traffic through town, four forty one corridor, nineteen corridor, and then come up with a plan to reduce the delays because you've got all these intersections, you've had all these people come in and are standing up against your planning and zoning efforts and construction, and it's because of the traffic. Traffic is getting bad, and I know you can complain to county, you can complain to the state, but I think you could set a primary goal, which is to measure the flow of traffic coming through this town and the major arteries, and then to start a war campaign to get that resolved and to reduce and to increase the flow, whether it's additional lanes and get, they may not be yours, but I think that needs to be done. And now the same thing for the lane. I talked about the water quality, hydrola and everything else. I think that needs to be raised to a higher level. We need some leadership in this county on that. The people that, well, I'm just encouraging you to because you've got a town that I think is, is well-staffed, you got a strong city manager, and I think that maybe you could take the lead in getting a league of cities to do that. So you measure visibility of the water because the water, if you look at it, that's one of the things that identifies clarity. And nobody ever talks about that. Talk about the nutrients in it, but measure the nutrients and some other things, and then just start asking Lake County Water Board, St. John's River Water Management, come in here, tell you what the measurements are and then what they're going to do to reduce that. And make that a primary goal for the city, to improve the quality of life, as they say. Because you're like, I think, number three on the list of fourteen cities as far as mileage rate. So to have that higher rate, you have to defend it with quality of life, and that's why you're, as opposed to you go to like Lady Lake and Mayor, like clerk from the bottom, and they're proud of it. And then you go to Sunkirk County Administrator for the whole county over there, will tell you they're the lowest mileage rate in the state. Now, I think they're fudging the factors there, but anyway, that's what I would recommend. And, yeah, so water quality, the, the traffic quality and the mileage rate, I think you ought to set some primary top goals and measure, monitor, curve along, ask for a status report. Thank you.
Thank you, Yocum. All right, council.
I would like to add two things, if the council would allow that for consideration. So the first one would be, and I mentioned this before, but the Taverri Square, I know it's one of my goals to utilize Taverri Square more. I would really like to do that by amending my goal here to just say, we need to go ahead and take it off the market. Right now, it's for sale. A lot of things have changed over the years. When we told the citizens that we would either sell it or rent the building there, that was one of the buildings was there, the building was taken down, it's now a park, and some of the strongest advocates, like myself, for putting it back on the market and selling it, that's a nice part. So I would like your consideration of at least have John explore the opportunity of taking it off the market. That's one goal. The second goal is, and some of y'all may know, may not know, that I'm a pretty big boater. I like boating, I love these waters. We had a boat ramp right there at Woodley, at the Woodley House Prop Shop. It's also next to the seaplane ramp. We built a secondary ramp on the west end of Wooten Park, Wooten Park West End, bathroom facilities, parking facilities. I noticed the other day that there were boats still utilizing the seaplane ramp, and I was like, I was shocked, and I asked Bob, I said, Bob, well, why are boats using this thing? I thought it was shut down. He goes, none of us to look. I would like it to be a goal that we shut that boat ramp down next to the prop shop due to safety reasons of the aviation coming along up and down the ramp with boaters in the way. And because boaters now have an option of using Wooten Park West End, before they didn't have that option, now they have the option. So I would like to look into the feasibility of not allowing boats to launch at the seaplane base and only have them launch at the west end.
That's good, Chris.
That's all. Mr. Fox. Can you hold that hand together? And I would just like to say, I like what Mr. Santoro had brought up. I mean, that's one of the things I know that we bring up during our budget goals. I think everyone in the council members up here, one of their top things is always take care of the employees, am I right? And I think that also includes, you know, if our staff that's here needs extra help, I think, you know, that's something we definitely need to look at. And I think that all encompasses taking care of the staff. I don't know if the council members agree with that or not, but that's not good.
Maintenance, same old sort of phenomenon. And we're just keep it level, if you have to raise evidence, we're out there.
Well, then I'd like to move to approve the council's goals as outlined today in the meeting, including curbs amendments or additions.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. All right, we are going to move on to new business, any new business, any old business. We're going to move on to the historical perspective. Ms. Burley.
Since we're going to be expanding the library, I thought I'd make a little history on libraries that we have had. In the early nineteen twenties, the Taverri's Women's Club had a library in their building on St. Clair Abrams, which later became the man's for the Union Congregational Church. And Mary McDonald was a librarian and they charged, librarian, and they charged fifty cents a year. And then, May first, nineteen fifty-two, at a city council meeting, B. Reed Martin, president of the Taverri's Chamber of Congress, explained their project to erect a block building fourteen by twenty-six in the southeast corner of Ridge Park. That's where our museum is now. The building was to have two rooms, thirteen by eighteen feet each. The right side was to be the Chamber of Congress and the left side was to be the library. And the cost was going to be twelve hundred dollars. The clerk was instructed to advance the Taverri's Chamber of Congress twelve hundred dollars for the cost of the construction of this building and started when the office is moved into the new building to deduct the sum of twenty-five dollars per month from the monthly payment of two hundred and fifty dollars from the town to the Chamber of Congress. It opened in September of nineteen fifty-two with Mrs. Robert Weeden, librarian, and it was only open eight hours a week. They had ten volunteers helping the librarian. Membership dues were a dollar per family per year, and they had one thousand books. So the next library was the one that was in Hampshire in nineteen seventy-three. It was finished in January, but because furniture didn't arrive, and it still hadn't risen, arrived, they set an open house for April eighth. And although eighty carts of books have already been moved in shell and installed, the arrival of the shelf ends hadn't arrived, nor the library furniture. The old library on the corner will be closing starting April first to allow for moving the balance of the books to the new building under the supervision of Mrs. Ethel Russell, the librarian. Mr. Martin urged all library cart carrying members to take out as many books as they could on the last of March and not return them until after two weeks when they can be returned to the library. So that in nineteen ninety-eight, they had an extension of the library. George Reagan credited the library director, Joanne McMacintosh, for helping make the expansion a reality. Macintosh credited the Taverri City Council for having the foresight to fund the project. The city received four hundred thousand dollar grant, but Taverri's had to match the four hundred thousand dollars. And the new facility doubled the size of the library to more than that ten thousand feet. The children's section, two study rooms, a meeting room, and offices filled the former building, which was rather decorated and furnished. And, oh, I wanted to tell you that our book sale, we got eighteen hundred dollars.
Wow. Great.
Thank you, Ms. Burley. And move on to, audience to be heard, we have a request to speak for, from Mr. Gary Santoro. Mr. Santoro is coming up tonight, everyone, if you would say your name and address in three minutes for your comments.
Gary Santoro, well, there are two things. Number one, during your boat activity here, which I'm totally in favor of everything that goes on here, I think is really great. I left a courthouse to come down and get a haircut. As I'm, as I'm walking down Main Street, I noticed there wasn't a parking space to be had. When I got to the barber shop, the barber shop was closed because there was no parking spaces. So for two days, the two people that worked in the barber shop, it was closed. So that means they had no income. I think we need to do something that will accommodate those businesses that attract walk-in customers to our place. Now, we talked about the parking garage, nobody's using the parking garage. Park there every day, you're going to have to go to court. The first two levels, the problem is people don't want to walk. So we need to come up with an idea on how to support those businesses that take care of walk-ins. Last but not least, every day, the fire marshal, the building inspector, and police officers make judgment calls on whether things conform to codes or whether it meets the intent. But they can't make a judgment call on a dumpster. I have immense respect for Mr. Williams, but I find it very hard to believe that everybody else can make it, but not with dumpsters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. And we do have three requests to speak, but as I mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, those were related to a quasi judicial hearing that's going to be coming up. So you're more than welcome to come up and speak, but I just ask that you please do not speak up to anything that's going to be coming before the P and Z or the city council on a quasi judicial issue.
I'm hanging here again. I just have a brief comment regarding the Taverri's Library. I pop in there sometimes to get copies. I came in there some time ago, it's been a while now, and there, that was some noise beyond belief in there. I have been in a lot of libraries in my lifetime, but I have never seen anything like that. There were kids camped out all over with their backpacks, sitting on the floor and everything else. I commented to the girl that was in there, and she said, well, these kids have no place to go after school, and they just come in here until the parents pick them up. But so in the afternoon, if you needed to use a computer there or make copies or any other function at the library, it's just impossible for the noise. I hope somebody can find a place for these kids to go so that other people can use the library. I'm sure some of them need, something needs to be done to find a, like, safe place other than for a library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And yes, I know our library gets used quite often, and we do have a T program that we're working hard at right now, so we are aware of that, so thank you very much. Anybody else have any other comments that they would like to make? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm recording Garrett. I'd like to thank Mr. Williams for his comprehensive explanation, quasi judicial, and all the people that showed up today. We'd like to thank him for his assistance in his legal concern. And I look forward to speaking on April eighteenth, along with everyone else that's involved in the Lakeview's concerns. And we look forward to providing you with all the information that we have related to this issue that we are all extremely interested in in the future. Thank you.
Any more to say? Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak, another comment? Yes, ma'am.
Jan Halbro, Baytree Community. Am I allowed to speak on something pending that was not on the agenda?
Is it related to the first reading?
It's a subject matter.
The community that is being built around Baytree Community?
Read right.
We, we, we.
I'm not really, there's, there's.
There's no quasi judicial matters pending for that property.
We just want to know where it stands.
It got approved and the developer.
The subdivision construction plans are approved. We still have to go to final plat for council to approve that.
Okay, so there'll be a final plat before the council whenever the developer submits the final plat.
So the temporary plat still has to be a permanent plat, displayed on by the council?
Yes, it'll come to council at some time in the future.
Right, okay. And I don't want to keep beating on dead horse, but you should have all the letters, all the emails and all the signatures coming to be posted. But there's one thing that I want to bring out, and that is, we're not just a little group of people over here trying to make a noise or whatever. We have, all of our people are retired, have came to live there to.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We can't hear, we got people back here with a full conversation on, we can't hear, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
It's not your fault, it's just people back here talking.
Well, I'm talking as loud as I can.
No, you're doing fine. Keep on going, you're doing fine.
But anyway, I brought people today, and I wanted to make a point, and I don't, I don't think it's. it's been brought out at all. We have people who live there that are retired policemen. We have people who live with us that are retired firemen. We have a large number of veterans, which if not for them, and many more like them, we would not even be here. And I would just like to ask you to please take into consideration all those people that is going to have their lives upset on the last quarter that they have. Okay?
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any comments they would like to make? Yes, sir.
I live 239 Jupiter Way in Bay Tree, and I've not been able to attend any of the past meetings because it laid up a little bit in an angle. And the only brief comment I would make today is that from three points, I oppose what's going on in the building planned around Bay Tree. Number one, I bought there because of three reasons. One, I'm feeling the view. When I walk out my back door, I was looking at tee-off number three, and there's a prosted element now, and we put a road down the middle of that golf course with rows of houses on each side of that street, and that would take away the view that I bought the house for. The second is, there's a street plan that runs all the way to the back of the cul-de-sac at Bay Tree, and it'll cut into the cul-de-sac, so my next concern would be the increase in traffic along Jupiter Way in front of my house. And then the third is, probably the most important, I have 32 square feet of my property in floods of, therefore I had my floods of insurance. But again, I've been there six years and seen the rains, and the water that's standing on the golf course in the back of my house. It concerns me if you allow that many more houses, I think it's something like 250 some homes under construction. If you allow them to come in, we're going to have a major runoff problem, or the ponds are not going to handle. That's why I'm making flood insurance now because of the drainage pond that's less than 200 feet up the street from my house. So that is a major concern for me, is the flooding, because Bay Tree is surrounded by a lot of wetlands. And I would just like to voice that opinion since I've not been able to make any of the previous meetings about the changes, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate your input on that. And I've received several emails from certain residents out of Bay Tree, and I'm more than happy to answer those. So, you know, if you would like to send an email to me or any of the other council members, or Mr. Drury, if you happen to address any of those issues that you have. Thank you very much for coming out. Anybody else? Ms. Man.
I'm Diggy Shambler, his wife, and my concern is that we are a 55-plus community, and I don't want to be surrounded by a community that is not a 55-plus because we're going, it's going to eventually eat into our community, and I just don't want to see that happen. Like Jan said, you know, there's a lot of us there that are retired, and that's why we bought in there, that's why we want to live there. And to have a community around us that's not a restricted area, you know, we just don't want to do that. Thank you.
If that, of course, is one issue the city is not able to enforce HOA covenants, I don't know if that's something that our attorney would like to address, just your restrictions. Restrictions. You're right. I mean, the city doesn't have jurisdiction over private deed covenants, those are matters that run the law and contracts with them. Anybody else?
The greatest 110 I am in the street. I was just wondering, given the youth council had meetings lately, are they too busy for us, or are they neglecting the responsibilities? How about following up?
No, I know, we're in the process of putting together the final meeting, the mock council meeting, and I know the espider say that they've completed all their requirements. It would be, of course, nice for them to attend as many meetings as they can, but... There's a syllabus that they have to complete, and they've completed it. The last part of it is a mock meeting, and that is scheduled for...
We haven't reached out to the school, and they just have not scheduled that.
So that has been scheduled, but you'll see them here before school ends for their final mock meeting. They've toured all, they've attended the meetings, they've attended the functions, they've done everything they're supposed to do.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? I see no one else. We're going to move on to reports. Mr. Drury.
I've got nothing to add, other than the list of events that are coming up that are in your package.
Let's go back. Nothing there. Nothing there. Nothing there. Chief, nothing there, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to council reports. Ms. Bobby's.
I have one thing that you'll ask about the stat sheet is, maybe we could improve some of the alleys for the baseball fields. The grass is sparse, and it's kind of rocky out there. I know it's late this spring season, but maybe we could get it right fall.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
The only thing I have is, I heard that the fly-in was fantastic. I was unable to be here, I was a pentacola, watch on my knees become, go from Shelby Smith to Shelby Patrick. It was awesome. That's all I have, other than, other than, on this day. In 1882, Jesse James was shot in the back by his cousin, uh, Ford, so, or Bob, I should say, or Jesse. And in case you didn't know it, today is National Walking Day. So go out and walk for 30 minutes, get your heart rate up, or walk down the entertainment district and listen to some music, but today is National Walking Day.
I just have a couple of things to add. Just the events that we had the past couple of weeks were awesome downtown. We had the Sunnyland Boat Show, which was mentioned, and we had the Seaplane Palooza. So, of course, I have to attend both those, and they were great events. I just wanted to acknowledge that Joe's brother, Rob Galloway, did a great job in his community support. He's a great partner that we have here in the city, and he had a wonderful event on top of one of the hotels, and all the seaplane pilots invited him to that. It's just nice, one thing, the city of Taverri is, we're definitely a growing city, and a lot of people always want to keep that small-town feel. And I always said that one way that we can keep that small-town feel is by having our community involvement. So we have some great businesses around here, and they're all really involved in our community. So very fortunate to have them around. Oh, the one thing I did want to point out was, everybody that I've talked to at the Sunnyland Boat Show and the Seaplane Palooza have wonderful, wonderful things to say about the city of Taverri and our staff. It's one of those things that we know how great we are, but when you hear it from people outside, it's a nice thing to hear. So I just want to share that with everybody. I want to thank everybody for participating today, thanks very much for coming out, and we will look forward to seeing you at our next council meeting. And with no further business, this is Gary Santoro.